All right, so we'll go ahead and open the Planning Commission meeting for October 21st, 2001 at 6:32. And we'll rise for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
To stand one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so we'll go for our roll call.
Commissioner Wolfius?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Lohman?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
Commissioner Stevens did tell me he was going to be out, and Commissioner Melcher? Two absent, four present, so we have a quorum.
Okay. First order of business is the meeting minutes from October 7th. Anybody have any corrections or notes that need to be made?
Do you need to state a reason why I abstained?
Oh, last time?
I had not been present at the previous meeting, I was excused, so...
You went out there?
This kind of looks like I didn't agree with something.
No, I mean...
Oh, no, I think it's okay.
Yeah, that's actually the same for me, I did not attend the 9/16 meeting and I'm listed as abstained.
Right, abstained from voting on the minutes.
We had a good reason.
We just need to have an absentee.
Oh, got it, okay, got it, got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're absent, you were absent, not abstained, okay.
Well, she abstained from voting on the 16th.
Oh, because she was...
Yeah, because she was abstained.
Okay.
And no, Henry, you don't need to have an excuse.
Whatever, okay.
All right, so if nobody's got any changes or notes that need to be added to?
I move that we approve the minutes as read, as prepared.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Hey, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolfius?
Yes.
Four eyes, two absent. Motion passes.
All right. Next order of business is public comment, so this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on topics that are not listed on our agenda for this evening. I don't believe we have anybody joining us online, nor do we have in the room. So we will move on to our first application for the meet of the evening, which consequently is our only application for the evening. So, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on application SD 21-03 at 6:35. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 8.27 acre property into 11 lots, ranging from 11,124 to 5,655 square feet. Application SD 21-03 is a modification to Phase 2 of subdivision application SD 20-02, approved December 7th, 2020. The applicant's wetland consultant determined significant wetlands and a stream located on-site that could not be mitigated. Mountain River subdivision Phase 1 was unaffected by this discovery, but Phase 2 was impacted by the wetland determination and therefore must be modified from the original submittal. Phase 2 will create 11 lots. Five lots are intended for the construction of single-family dwellings. Two lots shall be reserved for duplex developments. Three lots shall contain four plexes, and five, six plexes will be constructed on the lot. Number 32 of the site map, attachment B. The proposed subdivision is in residential high-density R2 zone per zoning map amendment application ZMA 20-01, approved by the City Council, ordinance bill number 9 for 2020, ordinance number 1288, dated June 23rd, 2020. So, excuse me. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So with that being read, do any of the commissioners have any personal bias in regard to this application? I have none. Conflicts of interest?
None.
No.
I have none. Any ex parte information?
No.
Keep shutting off.
Henry, any ex parte information? Okay. Commissioner Lohman?
No.
And I have none. All right, at that point, we'll turn it over to Angela for the staff report.
I'm going to read the description provided by the applicant. So, on December 7th, 2020, the City of Sweet Home Planning Commission approved tentative subdivision application for the Mountain River subdivision. As approved, this subdivision would have divided 8.76 acres into 46 lots for detached, single-family dwellings. However, before construction could begin, the applicant's wetland consultant determined significant wetlands and a stream are located on-site and could not be mitigated. Mountain River subdivision Phase 1 was unaffected, but Phase 2 was significantly impacted by these natural features. In an effort to reduce impacts to on-site wetlands, the modification will alter the layout in Phase 2. The approved Mountain River subdivision Phase 2 would have created 25 lots intended for detached, single-family homes. As modified, Phase 2 will create 11 lots. Five lots within the boundaries of Phase 2 are still intended for the construction of single-family dwellings. However, the remaining six lots are designed to support residential buildings of various densities. Near the intersection of 45th Avenue and Main Street, two lots will be reserved for duplex developments, and three lots will eventually contain four plexes. Finally, five, six plexes will be constructed on the largest lot in the center of Phase 2. All proposed lots in this revised Phase 2 layout will have frontage and access to the extension of 45th Avenue constructed during Phase 1. The proposed subdivision conforms to all applicable sections of the Sweet Home Municipal Code and, when necessary, the City of Sweet Home's comprehensive plan. This application narrative provides on-site conditions... Oh, whoops, sorry. On-site conditions have changed slightly since the tentative subdivision application because Mountain River subdivision Phase 1 is currently being constructed. Clearing and grading has occurred within the boundaries of Phase 1, and public utilities are nearly completed at the time of this application. 45th Avenue and 44th Avenue will still provide access to the subject property. There were no off-site improvements associated with the Mountain River subdivision, so 45th Avenue is still consistent with the city Sweet Home, local street standards, and 44th Avenue and Osage Street remain unimproved. The proposed on-site extension of 45th Avenue is currently under construction. The drainageway flowing from Main Street alongside 45th Avenue is identified as a protected stream with significant wetlands near its bank. Primarily located within the Phase 2 boundaries, the stream flows through a shallow ravine that leads to slope drop-off near the property's northern boundary. Adjoining zones and land uses have not been changed since the tentative subdivision plan. To the north, there is one undeveloped parcel, zoned recreation commercial; to the south, there are apartments and commercial uses, zoned highway commercial; to the east, commercial uses and manufactured home parks, zoned highway commercial; and to the west, there are single-family dwellings, zoned residential low-density. One moment, please. Skip ahead a little bit because some of this is repeat. Lot depth shall not exceed 2.5 times the average width. Staff finds that, based on the review of the applicant's site plans and the applicant's residential subdivision application and farming fact, lot depth would not exceed 2.5 times the average width. There is a portion of each lot where the front building line would be at least 60 feet in width for an interior lot and 70 feet in width for a corner lot. No lot would be dimensioned to contain part of an existing or proposed street. Frontage, each lot a parcel except those abutting private streets shall butt upon a publicly-owned street other than an alley for width of at least 25 feet. Staff finds, based on a review of applicant's site plans, the proposed lots would have at least 25 feet of frontage along 45th Avenue and 9 Bar Creek. Access easements where no other practical access to lots or parcels exists, the Planning Commission may allow an access easement for actual access to lots and parcels. And staff findings, the applicant has proposed a franchise utility easement, a drainage easement, and an access and utility easement. The applicant has not proposed a joint-use driveway, so the applicant application complies. Flag lots, the applicant is proposing three flag lots, Lot 23, Lot 24, and Lot 25, as part of the ODOT Access Management Program. Driveways for lots 22 and 23 shall be accessed from a public side street, not Highway 20. Keeping down, development and any remainder of the property and same ownership can be accomplished in accordance to this code. The applicant is proposing to create 46 residential lots, one open space tract, new streets and associated utilities. As reviewed in the staff reports, the lots would meet the minimum lot size of the zone and would be configured so that they could accommodate a residential dwelling. Staff finds that the applicant does not own any other property adjacent to the site. Adjoining land can be developed or is provided access that will allow its development in accordance with all applicable city codes. Staff has not identified any features of this proposed subdivision that would inhibit development on adjoining properties. The proposed street plan provides for circulation of traffic and meets the street design standards of this title. Staff finds that the modified street plan provides for circulation of traffic and meets the street design standards of this title. The location and design allows development to be conveniently served by public utilities. Staff finds that a modified location and design allows development to be conveniently served by public utilities. But I'm whipping through this because some of this is the same as the old ones, so...
Yep.
Any special features on the site, including topography, floodplains, wetlands, vegetation, and historic sites, have been adequately considered and protected if required by the city, state, and federal. And then staff findings, based on the review of the FEMA Firm Map Panel, 41043C0912G, and 41043C914G. State, dated September 29th, 2010, the subject property is not located within the 100-year floodplain and in the area of minimal flood hazard. Now, that's according to FEMA, just so we get that straight. The subject property does not contain wetlands that are inventoried in the Sweet Home Wetlands Inventory or the National Wetlands Inventory map. However, the Department of State Lands determined that a jurisdictional waterway appears to exist on the lot. If the entire project can be completed with less than 50 cubic yards of ground disturbance, then a state removal field permit is needed. However, the Corps does not have this volume threshold, and the applicant should check with the Corps if the Corps will require permitting. If the tentative plan provides for development in more than one phase, the Planning Commission must make findings and conclusions that such phasing is necessary due to the nature of the development. The applicant originally proposed to develop this property in two phases. The modification did not alter the phasing. Phase 1 shall include 25 lots in the western section of the property, including Tract A. Phase 2 includes 21 lots in the eastern section of the property. Staff recommends that the applicant specify a period of time for the completion of each phase. An application for residential development can be denied based on the lack of school capacity. The city has not been informed by the Sweet Home School District that their adopted school facility plan has identified a lack of school capacity. Staff does not recommend that the application be denied based on lack of capacity. Conditions of approval, to ensure compliance, staff recommends a condition of approval that upon development of the proposed parcels, the property owner shall construct all applicable street, sidewalk, and storm drain improvements that are required by and according to the provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. All public improvements must comply with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. Staff has recommended conditions of approval listed in Section 4 below. The act to ensure that the final subdivision plat comply with the application has been proposed. Additional conditions of approval may be required if any of the subject parcels are further divided under a future application or if they are physically developed with residence. Duration of a tentative plan of approval. The approval shall be valid for 12 months. The applicant has proposed a phased development. Staff recommends that time for each phase be specified. Extension shall be permitted as allowed under Sweet Home Municipal Code 1616080. Final subdivision plat, within one year from the date of the approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title and provisions of ORS Chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for approval by the city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant should provide all information required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. Conclusions and recommendations, based on the findings discussed in Section 3 above, staff recommends that this application be approved. Application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in Section 3 above. Any modifications to the conditions listed below would require approval in accordance with the provisions of law, including variance subsequent land use applications, et cetera. If the application commission, if the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings, review, and decision criteria in Section 3 and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board, the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria listed above. So recommending conditions if the application is approved. Number 1, the final configuration of the proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. See attachment B, the final configuration to subdivide an approximately 8.27 acre property into 11 lots, ranging from 11,124 to 5,655 square feet. Application SD 21-03 is a modification to Phase 2 of the subdivision application SD 20-02, approved December 7th, 2020. The applicant's wetland consultant determined significant wetlands and a stream located on-site that could not be mitigated. Mountain River subdivision Phase 1 was unaffected by the discovery, but Phase 2 was impacted by wetland determination and therefore must be modified from the original submittal. Phase 2 will create 11 lots. Five lots are intended for the construction of single-family dwellings. Two lots shall be reserved for duplex developments. Three lots shall contain four plexes, and five, six plexes will be constructed on Lot Number 32 of the site map. Number 2, the applicant shall specify a period of time for the completion of each phase. Number 3, as part of the ODOT Access Management Program, driveways for Lots 22 and 23 shall be accessed from the public side street, not Highway 20. Number 4, the new property line shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements of the residential high-density R2 zone. For aid, the design shall take into account the capacity and grade necessary to maintain unrestricted flow from areas draining through the subdivision or partition and allow extension of the system to serve such areas. Key provisions shall be made for water quality and retention storage areas designed and constructed to meet the standards set by the city. Number 5, Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.12.040, water system. The design shall be to city, and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account provisions for extension beyond the subject property, the design to adequately loop the city system. Or 6, Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.12.045, sanitary sewer. The design shall be to city standards and shall be approved by the city engineer. The design shall take into account capacity and grade to allow for desirable extension beyond this subject property. Number 7, within one year from the date of approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title and provisions of ORS Chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for approval by the city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall provide all information required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. Improvements within the subdivision shall be installed at the expense of the subdivider as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.24.050. Improvements shall be made under the procedures and specifications listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 16.24. Number 9, the applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public work permits, development permits, including building permits and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a 1,200-seater stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and any Department of State Lands permits as applicable. Number 5, Planning Commission action. In taking action on a subdivision, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal period, staff recommends that the Planning Commission's decision on the matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. Order, after the Planning Commission makes the decision, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. 1, move to approve application SD 21-03, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. 2, move to deny application SD 21-03, including adopting findings, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. 3, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. Or 4, other. Any questions?
Well, thank you so much, Angela, for reading all that out. A fair bit, and I know you did skip some because we do have some repeats from the original. So, thank you so much. So at this time, we'll go ahead and invite our applicant to come forward and give testimony. Since we actually have one tonight, which is a nice thing. After being seated, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah. I am Hayden Lee with Recent Associates. Our address is 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon 97321. I'd like to start by thanking Angela for her staff report. I know this is our second time through, and there's quite a few details to cover. We've had an opportunity to read and review the conditions of approval, and we agreed with the original, and we agree with all of the new conditions.
Might help if you move the microphone over by you.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, absolutely.
There we go. I think so.
Okay. We went through and started doing our research once we started moving towards construction documents, and our wetland consultant told us that we had the stream on-site, and it was worth protecting. And so we're back to modify some lots to hopefully remove all impact to this wetland. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do any of our commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Ava?
Yeah, I've got a question about the six plexes on Lot 32. Isn't that where some of the wetlands are located?
Yes, and that is then the benefit of using the higher-density housing types is we have more flexibility to maneuver them on that lot to avoid impacts on the wetlands.
So basically, oh, go ahead, Ava.
Are there any requirements as to how to define the location of the wetlands in that lot in relation to the housing structures?
Yes, we, our wetlands consultant, has mapped the wetland on-site, so we do have an exact area as to where we need to avoid. And so then...
Yeah, I'm just wondering how that interplays with the areas where the residents are going to be living.
When we go through to submit our building permit for these six plexes, we'll end up demonstrating that there is no impact. Additionally, if there is impact, we'd have to go to state agencies. And so, while we don't intend to impact anything, the goal of this modification was to decrease impacts. If there are any, we will absolutely get the necessary permits.
Yeah, this actually is the map I was kind of looking for just to understand better the topography of what you're dealing with. Okay, thank you, thank you for being there, by the way.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask their applicant?
No.
So I think to clarify what Ava was talking about too, during the building permit application process, the site plan will show actual locations of structures showing proper setbacks from the marked wetland areas. So, all right. Well, thank you very much. So at this time, we have the opportunity for any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition to the application. We have no one in the room and no one online. So, any neutral testimony, not those wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. Again, we have none in the room and none online. So we will close the public hearing at 6:57 for discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody have any questions or concerns? I think they've pretty well done their homework and have answered a lot of the questions before we could ask them. Seems to be a fairly good compromise in order to get the units on the property, lessening the impact, the economic impact on the developer, while still staying away from our wetlands areas.
Well, and as you all know, I am definitely, this is a double negative, but I am not opposed to having housing for multiple families in one, in one building. I think that's a good
Yes.
offering for the city. And I do remember this application from last year where we talked about the flag lots and we talked about the access from 44th Avenue and the half-street improvements, and all that still seems to be in place.
Yeah, and I also, I agree with you there. I like the decision to not just put up apartment blocks, to put up kind of a variation of multiple family dwellings.
Yeah, and also not to have only single-family dwellings.
Correct. So if nobody else has any other questions or any other discussion in regards to the application, we'll look for a motion.
I move to approve application SD 21-03, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
All right, Commissioner Journey has our motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll turn it over to Angela for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolfius?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four A's, two absent. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. You too. All right, at that time, it closes our public hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting at 7 o'clock, so we'll go to... Do you want to do staff report, or do we want to go for the go for the code testo?
Might as well give you an update on staff first just because it's easier to get that out of the way. Um, I just had a meeting earlier today with ODOT on our, the grant that we had received last year to update our transportation system plan.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we were notified last year. That's finally getting off the ground. And so, we're in the midst of, they issued the RFP, and we, I was part of the selection committee. We reviewed two candidates of two firms to do the work, and so, one was selected today, and so now starts the negotiation period for that work to be done. We probably will not kick off the actual work until, at the earliest, the beginning of next year because apparently the, I'm astounded at how long the negotiation process and all this stuff takes when you're at the state level. It's really amazingly long. So, it'll be the first of the year, at least, by the time that gets off the ground. But at least we, things are finally moving, which is nice because they were at a standstill for a long time. And the other bit of news is... The other bit of news is we, I had a meeting earlier this week that was the kickoff meeting for our housing needs analysis, and so I met the team that's working on that, and they will be getting started soon. So stay tuned on that front, but we will need to have a, essentially a stakeholder committee for that process, for that housing needs analysis. And I'm sure that it would be good to have at least a couple of the Planning Commission involved in being a part of that committee, and then as well as hopefully some other folks from around the community, representing the building, and realtors, and other community groups that have an interest in housing. So, wow, that makes it sound like I've been really busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, those are going well.
What else have I been working on?
Just continuing to work on all sorts of stuff. I feel like we've got a ton of balls in the air, and we every once in a while throw one back up in the air, and wait for it to fall down again. So...
So in regards, kind of to that, and the housing needs and everything for the community, have we, are we effectively reaching out to the school district to confirm that, you know, we're not allowing too much building in one area to overwhelm one school or another?
Yeah, so every time, we, I need to confirm with Adam, our new building permit technician, but every, previously with Molly, about once a month, she was sending a report of building activity to the school district.
Because I know there's been a lot of change in the...
There's been more to report lately, and I need to get with Adam, make sure he understands he needs to make that connection. So that's a good reminder for me. But we do make an effort to reach out to them regularly, at least once a month, to let them know kind of what's going on. It is kind of a, what would you say, a double-edged sword, you know, growth. But I have been, recently with the, some of the feedback we've gotten from the school district has been quite positive when it comes to development, and we hope that our needs and their needs coincide, that we can, as a community, provide for everyone. I think growth is a great thing, because it helps pay for a lot of those improvements. But on the other hand, it also demands more of those improvements, so it's a balance. But so far, the school has, the school district has not, they've not told us, you gotta stop this. They've basically mainly just said, we want to be aware and talk with you, because we can, they can, they seem to be able to accommodate things with boundary changes.
Yeah.
And so, and not all housing always means more kids either.
Right.
Depends on the number of retirees coming in, how many young families, and so forth. So it's, it's not an easy dance, but they seem to be a willing partner.
Oh, that's good.
Did we, from last meeting, did you have code enforcement check on the mobile home parks that people have in RVs?
Yes, we are paying more, closer attention to that. RV parks, and one in particular has taken a lot of our attention, and the biggest problem, and I believe it's the one, one of the ones that you were talking about. The biggest problem with it is we have not been able to get any communication from the owner of the property. And it's a out-of-state owner. The, it's the, this is the one that's across the street, the, what do they call it, Furlawn? Is it Furb, no, Fervu Villa, or something? Anyway, the, it used to be owned by Bill Lund, but is, it was no longer, it's no longer owned by him. This, some, the address is in Georgia of the owner.
Oh wow.
And we haven't been able to get any response. Add to that, it is actually in tax foreclosure, so the county has it listed as, as in tax foreclosure, and there was a judgment passed in this past summer. What happens though, is it takes a year after that before it actually gets auctioned off. So if there's no payment on the taxes by next September, it would go to auction. The problem is, that leaves us still with an eyesore, that nobody's doing it, and we don't have an owner that we can, that we can really lean on. So that makes it, that doesn't mean we can't abate it, but it means it makes it more complex, and it means that the city wouldn't end up putting the bill, and then putting a lien on the property, which hopefully would be paid when it's sold at tax auction, not necessarily guaranteed that it would be paid at that point. So it really depends on who buys it. It's, so it's, anyway, it's not a fun situation. Look at the cost of abatement here, and it's, it's pretty substantial, because you're talking about hauling off derelict manufactured homes, and that's, that's a really big bill to pay. So we have a lot of work to do still, trying to figure out how we can cost-effectively abate that property.
Is there a manager at the property? Who do the people pay their rent to?
Well, it appears that many are not, and somebody seems to be paying the utility bills, but it's that, we haven't been able to really hold that person responsible. And there is a person on site that has said that they, they tried to organize the payment of the rent, but they're not very, they're not officially a manager in any capacity. They're just someone who lives there, who wants to continue living there. So it's, it's a really, it's a pretty frustrating situation. Well, we will continue to beat our heads against that brick wall.
Because Park Place, or, and, oh, they have some RVs in their mobile home parks.
Which, which one?
I believe it's called Park Place on 22nd, I think it's 22nd 30 Main Street.
Okay.
And they have some RVs parked inside there, where people are living out of.
Yeah, if you, if you can shoot me, text me a picture of it, or just text me the address, I will get Ethan on that. And Chairman Parker sent me some emails after the last meeting, or sent me some texts, got some pictures, and that was very helpful, and got that over to Ethan, so that's really the best, the best way to get that information to us, is an email or a text, and it makes it very easy to get that over to our code.
Now does Sweet Home have a RV park, or is it up by Foster, or?
That the city owns, you mean?
Not necessarily the city-owned, but if somebody else has a park here that people...
There are many, yeah, there are many RV parks, some of which are excellent RV parks, and others that are not as...
There's a couple up by the lake.
Yeah, by the lake. There's some, there's one the county runs, actually, that's up there, that they do a great job. And so there are, there are parks, and there are parks that operate really well. The problem is, is there are, there are a lot of folks who want to place an RV that don't have, either don't have the money to place an RV, or there's no space in the RV parks for another RV. So I know spaces are pretty much year-round, most of the RV parks are 100% capacity. Anyway, any questions on that, or any other? I'll let Angela fill you in on what she's been up to with applications.
Um, I've got two petitions, two property line adjustments, just got them mailed, so it'll be...
Angela, could you speak into your microphone, please?
Yes, it wasn't on, sorry. Now can you hear?
Yes.
I have two petitions, two property line adjustments. I'm waiting for comments to come back on, and then I'll do the staff reports. I don't know if I have an application, I don't think I have another application in front of you guys yet, as of yet. I think this was the last one for a while. In the, oh no, yeah, I have a condition, a conditional use application that will be coming in front of you at the next meeting. We're working on just some processes within our group. It's a good thing, it's kind of a slow time right now, which is good, because we have some housekeeping things that we need to get done, and get some processes done, so that's what, a lot of what I've been working on. But other than that, Harvest Festival's done.
Oh, by the way, that was really nice. I dropped by for a couple hours, and it was, it was well-attended while I was there, that's for sure.
But, yeah, no, it was a fun event. Very good team. So in our next event that we'll be working on, I think is going to be the Sweetheart Run. I'm waiting for the Rotary to get back with me, because they are the ones that coordinate it. But other than that, it's, we're going into monsoon season, and it seems like, so building might slow down a little bit, so...
Yeah.
Do we not have a rain festival here?
Oh, no.
Unofficially, from October to March.
Months, months like this, I kind of miss the high desert.
Doesn't seem to be a demand for playing in the rain.
It's hard to believe that not so long ago, it was 115 degrees outside.
I know, isn't that amazing? So we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Correct.
There, we have one application in, and one more that I'm expecting to be submitted Monday. I just met a lady at Rotary, actually, who's expressed interest, so, so that's good. And then there's a commit, there's a Administration, Property and Finance Committee, I guess it's the committee that, of the City Council, and they're meeting next week, and we'll be talking about applications. So hopefully we'll have someone appointed relatively soon.
So is there any discussion that we would go back to Monday meetings, or anything like that, since we changed meetings?
Yeah.
You know?
I was wondering if someone was going to bring that up. I have not spoken with anyone, and that's certainly a valid topic. I guess, I am interested in hearing your thoughts. You have kind of control over that, which it is unfortunate that we changed it, and then it ultimately proved to not last.
Yeah.
I think that's a reason for changing, but I find this time works for me personally.
Yeah, it works.
If a different time works better for the remaining commissioners, we can talk about it.
I thought it might be a little more problematic than it has been, and I was just going to ask Angela, as far as being later in the week, does that help with the staff report, or does it matter, or Monday versus Thursday?
It doesn't matter, because the packets, you know, are the week before anyway, and so whether it's due on a Monday, sometimes Thursday is better, because I have weekdays beforehand, but it doesn't matter, because I, you know, the week behind, so either way, doesn't matter to me.
Henry, do you have any opinion on a day of the week that we meet?
Either day works alright with me.
Okay.
I switch stuff around with work and stuff. To have Thursday, if you switch to the Monday, since it's the beginning of the work week, I might not be able to do it.
Okay.
So, I guess...
So Thursday, Thursday works for me. I guess I'm just concerned about the process, because, you know, and I just would like us to be cautious if it comes up again, that it's requested that we change a meeting date for circumstances, that maybe we think more, a little bit differently, because I've had this experience in other, with other groups, where accommodations were made, and then things kind of went backward, and it's like, oh, so we did this, but the outcome wasn't what we planned. And, you know, we work well together as a group, and I think once we establish a routine, that we should be protective of that.
Yeah, I don't mind the Thursday, and I agree with what you're saying, we can't just keep bopping around and changing based on a whim. I am thankful that we don't meet on a Friday.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not doing that.
Yeah. My wife says I'm not doing it either.
You know, we, we changed it to 6:30 to accommodate one of our Planning Commission members who's no longer here. For years, we met at 7:30. Actually, I kind of like the 6:30 myself, but, but you're right. We sometimes have one Planning Commission member that has a little problem, and we try to accommodate him, and it just stuck.
Yeah, kind of snowballs.
In this case, I guess the question is, was, was anyone hampered by the move from Monday to Thursday?
No, it took a little bit to get used to. I think it actually ended up being a better move for me personally, just because Mondays are always so hectic anyway. But, yeah.
And your question is a good one. I was going to bring up something similar. Is there any problem with what we're doing? And it sounds like there isn't, so...
I don't think currently. It was a good thing to bring up, though, that's for sure.
Sure, I, and so I would, I would certainly, I think the, the frequency of changes is probably the biggest problem. You don't want to, you want to have some consistency in how, in communicating to the public when you're meeting, communicating to applicants when you're meeting. And so it's, it's good to be as consistent as we can. At this point, I would say we already made the switch. I would, the only reason I would suggest switching back is if it, if there was a majority of the commission that just really had a, was not able to make it work.
So I guess that's the irony, is that actually 6:30 has worked well for us, and Thursday seems to work well. And so that's why I'm saying, let's protect this if we're challenged to do something else in the future.
I agree, it should be a much more difficult thing to change it, and I agree with Ava, it's kind of interesting how it's all worked for the, for the greater good in the long run.
I like Thursday, not just because of work part, it gives me something to look forward for the weekend and after.
Yeah.
I, and I personally appreciate Thursdays as well, because doing a meeting right after the weekend was, was usually not as much fun as having a few workdays to prepare for.
Yeah.
So why don't we make something official? Just propose that we leave it exactly the way it is, until there's some other crisis that we have to deal with, and just ask us for an opinion and put it in the minutes.
Okay.
Barring some fictitious worldwide pandemic.
And make it clear to the applicants what the expectations of meeting dates and times.
Yes, and that's, that's already done, and I will confirm this time it happens again.
And just so you all know, I did hear from Jamie. She sent me an email, which I didn't see till just a minute ago. She's in Portland. She did send me an email, and telling me she couldn't make it.
Okay. With that, should we turn it over to Robo Reader?
Oh, do we have to?
I know, but I just, I'm looking at the binder, and I've got more done on the left than I do on the right.
I actually was doing some math.
Yeah.
We're getting there. We are more than 70% of the way through.
Here's another question. So once this is all done and read into record, are we going to continue our twice-a-month, or do we go back to once-a-month, until there is something new to review? Or how soon does that process come back to us?
So with the code, after we do this initial review, which we're 70% of the way through, what we'll do is, we'll present the changes that we, because there were a number of things that we were correcting as we go along, and there were some things that you asked us to investigate, and so we'll go through those items. And at that point, we'll have a draft that we are, that I would assume you would be comfortable recommending to the City Council, and we'll have a, you know, start the public hearing process essentially for that document.
Okay.
At the planning, at the City Council level, I'm not sure how much detail they're going to want to go into, but the frustrating thing is, is our, our charter requires reading out loud all of the ordinances that we pass.
So anything that we've changed?
So no, well, what I'm saying is, this entire thing that we've been going through is going to have to be read out loud at a council meeting somehow. And so we'll prob, well, three times to, you do a reading three times, but the second two times, they're by title only, so you don't have to read the whole thing.
Oh.
And so what we're probably going to have to do is divide it into pieces, and, because I don't, I don't know how long we can, how fast we can have the computer read this thing. It's going to be some grueling meeting, so it's going to take a while.
Okay.
Once, but once we, once the commission, the Planning Commission is... Um, once, but once we, once the commission, the planning commission is done with it, um, I don't know that we have any other projects of this magnitude or anywhere close to this magnitude. And how often you meet is, one, up to you, and two, dependent upon, uh, the, the workload.
Right.
And so, uh, I, it, I would predict that going back to once a month unless, um, a second meeting is necessary for, um, y- you know, it's nice to have the option because sometimes if we, you know, for example, if we have a big economic development opportunity and it requires fast action, um, it's nice to be able to say to, to a company coming in, yeah, we'll get that in front of the planning commission as soon as possible and, and, and get you in here. You know, that, that's, that's something that I'd like to be able to do, but there's no reason to force you to come here to.
Yeah, I guess I don't mind. I kind of want to just bring it up because I, I didn't want to shirk my four volunteer hours a month, you know, trying to.
Well, you know, some, some months maybe less, some months maybe many, many more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to go back to our, you know, um, meetings on Thursdays, and one thing that has been nice for me is I don't have to switch due to Monday holidays.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't have to deal with the Monday holiday.
We did run into that quite a few times.
So I don't have to remember that.
We just have to worry about Thanksgiving.
Yeah, true. Thanksgiving is the only one.
No, we're the first and third, so we don't have to worry about their things there.
So that has been a, a positive change of not having to adjust for that.
We do do that a lot, so. Well, I guess I'll turn it over to the commissioners for an opinion on if we click through Robo Reader or if everyone is super exhausted.
I don't care which other.
I'm only saying this to be funny, but we ought to do it when we can make the other one suffer with us.
The other ones are online without letting anybody know.
It isn't fair for just three of us to suffer.
Well, Ava's sticking with us.
I'm here, I'm here.
It was one week, I think it was just me and Ava or something, and, oh, you guys are off and we suffered, so it, yeah, it don't matter to me, whatever.
Well, I, I say there's a, there's quite a few chapters that are like one page, or quite a few sections that are one and two pages. So, I'm, I'm up for a good half hour anyway. If you are.
Yeah, let's just move forward and get her done.
Alright.
The sooner we get done, then we'll all be happy.
Ava has spoken. Click it.
See if I can remember how to do that. How do I do this? You know, I did this with, uh, I did it before with.
But Henry, I did like what you just said. Like the other people suffer.
Alright, hold on. Well, hold on. When I did this before, I was able to click in this and search for it. Ooh, dictate voice.
But Blair, if it's gonna take you a long time to figure it out, we could, by the next meeting, you'll have it figured out.
Henry, I'm trying to. Oh, it's in protected gear, that's the problem. Hold on. I have to let it sign and hot. Hmm. Oh. Does anything make you reset your password constantly and change it?
Well, that's just a part of life.
I don't work. It's like, you know, you go in for three weeks and you have to change it. You can't repeat stuff.
Can't use the same thing for some, yep. I hate that.
Like.
Oh, did you log in under your name?
Okay, that. So if I want to build a bigger secondary structure on my property, I have to make it more than two hundred square feet in order to make this taller than I can be. Puts me up.
It's worked just fine, that's, I don't understand why.
Yeah. I know. I just, I need it. I just wish I had some kind of like physical card with a chip that you had to have to access stuff, and then it wouldn't.
Oh, okay. It's got a period of everything.
Yeah, well, that's what a lot of people do at work. They add a period or an exclamation mark, and then. Puts me up. One guy would give you his password and then the month and the number. So June, like, he'd do passwords and six. July is the password and then seven.
I think I did that one time.
Yeah.
One of the companies, because it was so much easier to, to remember, because you keep changing, you forget.
Alright. Okay, I think I finally got it. So, um, the, uh, the table is a little bit hard to understand when it reads it.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure I paused and give you a chance to ask any questions. As I read through this, um, one of the concerns that occurs to me is that, for, depending on how much land you have, it's not unusual for someone to want to build a detached garage.
Right.
Uh, on a property, especially if there's an existing house that doesn't have one. And so, a lot of times, those go in a side yard. Um, and so if you are gonna have something over six hundred square feet, you're only allowed to have it in the rear yard, not in the side yard. Um, I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that, if that's, uh, too restrictive or.
Residential zones, this is a residential accessory, not just going to such.
Well, no, but it says that this is a, so it's an accessory structure in a residential.
So it could be a shed.
It could be a shed, it could be a garage. This, this specifically excludes accessory dwelling units, so it's not talking about what you would, what somebody would live in.
I don't know.
I don't know why it wouldn't read side or rear on over six hundred square foot as well, because some lots are fairly wide.
I guess it depends on how much side, how much, uh, side yard you have.
And if it fits, if it fits with all the setbacks, then.
I mean, my house is at the end of a cul-de-sac and most of the yard I have available is side yard.
Yeah. I, I don't have any problem with it reading side or rear as well, as long as it doesn't say front.
Another question. Why have we lumped manufactured houses along with shipping containers? I mean, that just didn't seem right.
Well, it's, it's.
And don't we have, aren't we required not to accept manufacturer?
No, no, so this is, this is talking about only for accessory structures.
This, uh, in addition to the residence.
So, um, essentially, yeah, if you already have a residence there, you already have a manufactured home there, this is basically saying that any additional structure that you want to have on your lot can't be a metal shipping container, and it can't be a, um, manufactured home or a railroad boxcar. Uh, and I guess the, the reasons in this draft for that, and the reasons most people, I guess, would suggest that in their neighborhood, is that those types of structures tend to clash pretty spectacularly with the other buildings that are in the neighborhood. So, I, I'm not saying this is right, that's the thinking behind it. So if, if, uh, if you think those should be allowed, this is certainly the time to, to bring it up and, and discuss whether that's appropriate.
I, I guess my bigger thing would be, I mean, I section C, the multiple accessory structures, there shall be no limit to the number of structures provided.
Yeah.
So I'm like, if somebody wants to put up fifteen of those Home Depot sheds that are less than two hundred square feet, they can do that?
If they have the lot coverage.
But it.
So the lot coverage.
It says area coverage for accessory structures, no maximum for the small ones.
It says they provide the structures in combination comply with the area coverage requirements.
So a- adding them all together.
Right, if you have a residential, residential lot in the R1 zone, I think it's thirty-five percent max coverage right now, can be covered in buildings. And so, uh, you take your house and all those structures all together, and they can't exceed thirty-five percent of the lot.
So do we need to say that instead of no maximum in the, in the table?
Each zone is a little bit different, like R2 is sixty percent, R1's thirty-five percent, so it depends on the zone of what the percentage is. So this also brings up the topic of, because right now we have a maximum eight hundred and sixty-four square foot for an accessory structure.
Yes, I'm aware of that one.
We have some large lots in town, and people said, so I can build five, five eight hundred and sixty-four, but I can't build one bigger. And it's like, yes, you can, as long as you don't go over lot coverage. So this is where this kind of, you get this double-edged sword here of whether they have enough room to build a bigger structure. And if you wanted to base the structures on overall lot percentage instead of the size of them, you know, that's, that's a discussion we've had before, or at least, you know, you can stick with eight hundred and sixty-four square feet instead of lot percentage, and they can build multiple ones. So this is kind of where that comes back to. Um, we've had that, you guys have had a couple of the shops here in the planning commission for variances, because they did have enough room, but because we go by overall square footage and not by lot percentage, they, they were limited to the eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. So that's kind of where this all kind of circles back to.
I guess I'm torn on that one, and I should probably steer clear of it, because I actually am getting ready to try and build a shop in my backyard on a large lot, so.
And, and that's fair. The, I guess the, the main thing that you want to look at is, okay, in some, in some situations, I think most people would agree, yeah, it's perfectly fine to have your big shop. If you have a lot that's sufficient large, or if it can be far enough away from the property lines and so forth.
Yeah.
It may not really affect the feel of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I.
But in other situations, I guess you gotta think of the worst-case scenario.
Yes.
And see what, what you want to do to mitigate.
And that still, that still is held to no bigger than the structure on the property. I, I could see that, especially on a lot like mine, where someone would build, you know, a fifteen hundred square foot shop, and it would just be this giant monolithic structure in the back. I mean, I would never build that, but I, I don't know, maybe, maybe the eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, which I know is a twenty-four by thirty-six building, and very common pole barn, um, maybe that number could be flexed a little bit, but I, I don't know, because that would have to be based on lot size as well.
What if it was on, based on a percentage of the primary structure? Percentage of the size of the primary structure.
Well, I have a little house. And again, I don't want to get into it too much. I've already designed the shop. It's eight hundred and sixty-one square feet, just to make sure. And it matches the style of the house, but.
And I only brought that up just because that was one of the reasons, you know, when we're just talking about, well, can they put in multiple ones? Well, you have the either-or scenario there. Either we figure out a different percentage for that eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, or we allow them to put in, you know, based upon their lot percentage of sixty percent or thirty-five percent, they can build up to however many will get them to that point and not beyond that, but, um, and that's the only reason, because it's been a topic of conversation within this group multiple times.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm personally fine with eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, and then if they want something bigger, it's conditional use permit. Because then it's a case-by-case basis, instead of trying to create a, yeah. Oh, it's a variance, not a conditioning use, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to own a piece of property and next door, they had a fairly sized lot, and they put ten or fifteen units, then at that point, I feel like I'm not in residential area anymore. I'm in a commercial area with, with all those buildings, and thinking that it would also decrease your property value.
Yeah. So, um, we did have this conversation with, with Walt, uh, the, the drafter of the document, um, about accessory dwelling units, and we'll, we'll, with this, that's not this particular section, but we'll get to that. And, um, and I think what we landed on for the draft was to base it somewhat on, as a percentage of the size of the house. Um, and so.
Oh, so that.
You could, you could say, you know, limit it to the current standard, or uh, this percentage of the size of the house, whichever is larger. You know, you could do something like that.
Oh, right, and.
So that there's a limit.
Right, so that their accessory structure wasn't bigger than their actual.
Right, unless they had a, a residence that was only eight hundred square feet.
Just similar to what.
Which is possible, I suppose.
In one of our zones right now, the, um, minimum, uh, building, uh, size is seven hundred and twenty square feet in the R2 zone, but the accessory structure is eight hundred and sixty-four. So we've got some, we've got some issues with our current code that doesn't really match up. So that is, that is a scenario in one of our zones right now.
Yeah, I like, I like the either-or, you know, which is greater kind of a thing.
Okay, um, and do, are you concerned? I guess, uh, Commissioner Lowen express, expressed some concern about the, you know, the number of structures that it could get out of hand.
Well, yeah, and, and you know as well as I do, there are people out there that will put in multiple ones, and then down the road, they will connect to them, and then they will be one. So, um.
We don't want to give them an incentive to do that, if, if they just have it be allowed that they can, that they can.
Because like in the past, I've seen people, you know, once they get the permit, and if the city is not policing it enough, and then if they got a big yard and it's fenced in, well, you can't see what they're doing in the backyard. And the more buildings they put in the backyard, to me, it's also could be dangerous in some way, because some people see, oh wow, there's ten buildings. Wonder what they're storing in them, and you know, the crime. cuz some people see, oh wow, there's ten buildings, wonder what they're storing in them, you know, the crime.
Well, and there, we have seen that people will make them into uh, bedrooms.
Yeah.
Other things, and, and often it's a structure that's not designed for that and not safe for that. It's a concern certainly.
Yeah.
There are some people that just collect little buildings like they collect old cars on their lot.
Dollhouses.
Our home, over the years, I've probably tore down six structures. They were just little old shacks, one for this, one for that, one for the goat, one for my tools, one for my lawnmower.
Yeah. Well, and going back to your over six hundred square foot in the table, I, I do agree that it should read side or rear yard as well. Because there are multiple cul-de-sacs in our town where they are pie shaped and they don't have much of a backyard as far as distance.
Okay, um, so, let me see what we can, what we can figure out drafting wise to have that, I guess that floor uh, of, um, floor of eight, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet and then a, a percentage of the building size. Uh, see what we can come up with.
I guess too, I don't mind if there are, are variances for a larger structure and then there, we can address them case by case instead of.
But it, wanting a larger structure doesn't comply with our variance code.
Oh.
Current variance code, which is why they have not been able to pass them in the past.
Correct, okay.
Because it doesn't follow the variance criteria.
Yeah.
So that is why.
Cuz the variance requires something like an immovable object or a creek or?
Yeah, the intent of a variance is, is, is.
Abused.
It, the, what, what variance really should, a variance really should be based on something that's out of somebody's control.
Right.
Um, and so if you wanna, if they, well, maybe a closer review, have it, have them come before the planning commission and so forth. You know, you could say if, that over a certain size, it's a conditional use. Or, or something like that, now you can put that in the code as a conditional use and then that's.
Instead of a variance.
Instead of a variance, would be probably my recommendation cuz.
And then the conditional use would come before planning commission.
Right, right, um, and sometimes that's enough to get to dissuade some people cuz they're like, oh, I don't wanna pay the fee and I don't wanna have to have my neighbors notified that I'm gonna bring, build this monstrosity. Uh, and that gets them to back down. And then, and then in the truly justified cases, usually the people will go through the, the effort and you just have to be clear with the criteria of what should be considered for that conditional use. So, I'm not saying you should definitely do it, but that's an option for you to consider for this.
That seems like a, like a better option and it seems like, like exactly like you're saying, you know, certain people will just settle on the eight hundred and sixty-four square feet and be fine with it and other people that really want it to happen will do it.
And one question.
Well, I, I agree with um, Blair that, um, the definition in variant is something that was not created by the applicant. And also, we're trying to diminish the number of applications we have related to variances. Um, so anything that we can do to make the language really clear, I think is to do our benefit and the public's benefit.
Yeah, just so we're not handing out variants, variances willy-nilly.
And that.
Maybe it would be.
Because that's what we were doing for a while and we really need to not do that anymore.
And that goes to the criteria, being really specific to the criteria for that.
Yeah.
On which it'll be entered or not.
I, I can see if they want something greater than eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, that it be a conditional use application.
When somebody's building something for like eight hundred and sixty-four square feet and they're putting down a cement slab. Are they able to put a thousand square feet slab and only build on the eight? Because my concern is that, you know, they'd say, oh, I'm gonna use that for probably a patio, but once they got it all approved and built, then they have that already foundation put in and then without the city noting, they, they go on bigger, you know, structure.
Um, certainly, I mean, that's, that's more of a, uh, of the, the building permit uh, issue, but certainly I can see people trying to do that. Um, with, when it comes to uh, concrete pads though, they still have their, that's still considered lot coverage uh, because you're, it's an impermeable surface that you're adding to your lot. So, for example, I mean, it goes back to that percentage of your lot that you're allowed to cover in buildings, you can't pave your entire lot with, with concrete or asphalt because that would go over your, your limit.
There is one in Duck Hollow.
You're, like your driveways and stuff, it can go, it can go within, um, th- those don't count.
They don't, I thought they did.
No.
They should.
So it's, it's the structures that do, but it also, just to alleviate some of the concern also, is most of these things come through a building permit and, you know, I review them, building and engineering reviews them, it all gets inspected. And so it's gotta go out and if it looks like, um, our inspector's pretty keen, he can spot whether, you know, someone might be looking to, and any other thing that comes in, you know, we're pretty quick and people are quick to turn people in if they think that they're doing something. And so, um, most of that can be caught during the building inspection process before they're allowed to have, um, you know, a C of O. Um, even with, when it comes to shops and whatnot. And so, you know, he's, he's pretty good at catching those things he has before. And so, it's one of those things that, yeah, the, it's a rare time someone's gonna wanna take advantage of it and do that and maybe build a lean-to onto the shop or do something like that, but we can only stop so much of it.
Sure.
You know, so it, and uh, the concrete slab, um, if there, if it's gonna be covered, then yes, it counts. If it's just a concrete slab, like you can go, like your driveway, if you want concrete, it can go into even the setbacks. So, um, it's a little bit different depending on.
If you go in the setbacks, I thought it counted toward your lot coverage.
Not necessarily, no.
We did one out in Duck Hollow that's concrete from property line to property line.
Wow.
They're handicapped, I mean, they were, they're wheelchair, everything's in a pot in the garden, so.
Hmm, interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that brings up concerns when it comes to storm drainage and.
They actually did really good drainage in theirs, but I don't think that's something typically people would do.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, we will, we'll get some, we'll get some options for you on that. Any other questions or concerns about this section? All right, any, that's uh, the part I was talking about with accessory dwelling units. In this case, it talks about them not exceeding seventy-five percent of the primary dwelling floor area. But you have to follow all the other setbacks and lot coverage requirements.
For me, the setback, the B1 zero sidebar, side yard unit sets, when I think about what we have, cuz it's a, it's a detached, which I get, the center would be zero, but the way that it's stated, I don't know, it is.
Attached dwellings?
It says zero side yard unit shall comply with the setback requirements for the front yard, rear yard and so zero side yard. Well, it's not necessarily a zero side yard.
So it, this is talking about, essentially talking about like a townhome, right?
Yeah.
They're attached, so, zero si, it's a zero side yard unit. Um, the only time you would have a, a, a side yard in that, it would be a, a side yard adjacent to the street.
Or the end of the structure.
Okay.
You know, it's the, yeah, it's the end.
I guess it's, it's stated a little bit differently in current code, so.
I guess I've never really seen it as stated as a zero side yard unit.
No, that's, it's not.
Different terminology definitely.
It's different terminology nonetheless, because it's uh, it's not considered a side yard, it's because it's the interior walls are zero lot.
Yeah, and usually you think of like zero lot line, it would be commercial.
Cuz normally we have six feet between each, um, do, each structure on a property and this is a zero when you have an attached, so.
Like a shared wall. Yeah.
And those, yeah, and those are, those are governed by stricter building code requirements that kinda meet all the concerns that you would have. Any?
So under seventeen dot seven two dot zero two zero, are those duplexes?
They, uh, so, they are considered attached dwellings, they would look like a duplex, um, but they technically wouldn't be. The difference is, the, a duplex is two units on the same lot, where there's, where there's one property and it's two units. This, these attached dwellings are technically separated lots as well, but the, the building is built so that the shared wall is right on the property line.
So more condo or townhome?
Yeah, townhome style. So that's, that's the only reason why there's a difference is that the, that the, in this case, the actual property line goes right through there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Additional question on that, on that section or should we go on?
Let's go on.
Okay, temporary uses.
Question on B, commercial activities for amusement. Would there not be a time on there, like beyond, it, it can't stay open past a certain time because of noise and stuff?
Um, it just, it, it's, it's talking about this being in a commercial zone and so, we don't have any time restrictions on stores, uh, on commercial establishment. And so if you have a grocery store, for example, that's open twenty-four hours, um, this is basically anticipating that in the parking lot of that grocery store, you could have some temporary use, uh, temporary commercial use, this is, this open the same twenty-four hours also.
Cuz like that, um, old lumberyard, that's considered commercial property?
Which, oh.
The one that's closed down, we're trying to get a, um, they have to clean up with the.
Oh, yeah, it's recreation, commercial.
Could somebody not buy it and, and make it an amusement park? And then that, you wouldn't want that to be open twenty-four hours?
That wouldn't be temporary.
Okay.
I mean, I guess theoretically, somebody could put in some sort of amusement, uh, commercial establishment and have it open twenty-four hours.
Where they have these carnivals that come into towns for only a, a week or two or something?
Yeah, I, I suppose, the problem, the main problem is you don't, you don't see those very often, to my knowledge. I mean, they, they, they open pretty late, but I don't know. I mean, they, they open pretty late, but I don't know that any of them are open that late.
Yeah, usually 10 or 11 in there.
Economically, it's the cost of running an organization like that. But, you know, certainly, if there's concern about people having it open real, really late, we can look into that. But I haven't, in all the places I've lived, I haven't really noticed any issue with any temporary uses like this being open at all hours.
Doesn't that also come with a city council permit for events?
So what this is saying is that you could have a temporary use that doesn't require that special permit. But then the council would have, if there is a special event permit, the council would have greater latitude. And they, and they already do to some degree, when, when the jamboree happens.
That's what I was gonna ask.
There's special rules when it comes to the beer gardens and other uses, closure of streets, et cetera, that the council authorizes. And that would continue to happen. So when it comes to temporary uses, I, you know, in commercial zones, they're typically, usually we don't really exercise any, any rules on how late. Now, lighting and noise, when you're adjacent to a residential zone, then yeah, that's, that's governed by, by other provisions of the code.
So in section A, number one, there's just that little typo, limited to.
Right, right.
Yeah, I noticed that. One thing that I thought was interesting is it spells out that food services get extra time.
And unlimited.
Unlimited, right.
And that seems to point toward food trucks, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know about the unlimited renewals.
Would that fall under that one that opened up, kind of like across from the Buy Mart?
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
The Hawaiians.
Across the street from Buy Mart, there's a Hawaiian food truck there. And they, they came, we had a meeting with them about that. They wanted to put their food truck there, and it's permitted in that zone.
They have to own a lot though.
They own a lot too. So the, the line between temporary and permanent gets really hard, the food trucks. Because they, a lot of them nowadays, they might as well be a permanent.
Yeah, they level them up on blocks, but they still have axles and tires, so they're still moving.
True, true. There is a developer that's wanting to put in a kind of a food truck court.
I love them.
And I've seen those in other places, and they work out. It can be great, depending on how well they're done. But even though you have one, you have, the intent is to, that you can switch out your, your food trucks on a regular.
Yeah, the one in Albany's done very, very well.
I ate one in.
Salem, Salem's really good.
Actually, my wife and I stopped at one in Salem, and it was, it was fantastic.
Lebanon, I hear, is putting one in as well. They've got a terrible name for it, but.
Yeah, it's nice to be able to get with some different food.
The slabs. Because it's like, there's like just slabs of concrete there. I mean, they could have called it the depot. They could have called it many things, but.
Salem, they've got, it's called the yard.
Yeah.
Well, at least the yard, I don't know.
It's got like 20 or 30 different.
Slabs, yeah. That's, that's what I think they're going with.
Okay.
So I've got a question about G. Are these as temporary habitation?
Yep.
Don't we have a process? Well, what concerns me is that. Habitation is limited, there's language about limited to 30 consecutive days. Da da da. And I remember when we developed that. But what's missing is when that permit needs to be attained by. Like, can you just like be living there for two weeks and not have a permit? Or, and do we have a process that articulates that permit process better?
We, now, this is governed by other city code also. So what we probably need to do is make sure that, I, I believe this fits in with that, with that provision. But I think we should reference it.
Yeah.
Exactly, reference where the rest of the information is necessary for that, yeah.
So yeah, I think that's the best way to, just to note, for RVs as temporary habitation, it'll just, it'll just point to the provision of the code where we, we already have ruled on that.
Yeah, very good.
And in fact, that, that provision of the code, I don't think, this is more expansive, and it talks about tents. We don't, in the other portion of the codes that deals with this, it doesn't, you can't get an RV, you can't? I didn't see tents in there.
Actually, Ethan and I just had this conversation because I didn't think tents were listed in there, and he found that it is listed in there. But I don't know how, because, I don't know how we can approve them, because even RVs, if we approve for an RV, temporary RV permit, it has to be hooked up to water and sewer. So how do we do that with a tent? So him and I got on this discussion, and I told him to come see you, but you were in a minute. He was like, I don't know, we need to have a discussion with the big boss about this. Because it is, tent is in the provision, and, but I don't know how we can regulate that based on temporary RV permit. Code that we follow, we currently follow in our temporary RVs.
Well, I don't see how a tent is a recreational vehicle.
Well, neither is a boat trailer.
Well, yeah.
So that's kind of confusing to me too, but.
We'll scratch it then.
Yeah, because there's, there's a couple of things in there that, that recently came up that I was even confused about, so.
All right, well, we'll take a look at that. But yeah, I think, I think in this case, we'll just reference the, the code that we're already using.
Yeah.
And we'll address that problem. That's not a land use thing, particularly.
But I agree about tents, and I agree with Jeff's concern about no hookup to sanitary sewer. I mean, we've got homeless people living in tents, and we know what kind of a problem that is. So having that language in this code provision, I think, just leaves us open to be really vulnerable.
Yeah, agreed. I'm digging these really short sections.
I am too. I feel like we're getting something done.
Talking about B and D's.
On C. When it's saying that can't use a basement, but you know, some of the older homes have an outside way to get to the basement. So that still restricts the basement not to be used?
This doesn't take into account anything like that, so.
Because most newer homes, you have to be inside the house to get to the basement. But a lot of older ones have an outside excess stairway or a door that you can.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be the, I, I, I mean, because the, the other guest rooms aren't accessible from the outside. I'm not sure that outside access is their concern. I'm not sure why that provision is there, or just.
I don't know, maybe it has to do with fire health and safety or something.
We could look at, if you think it's overly restrictive, I don't.
Because some people, you know, do make their basins into living. And they, I can see them running that out to somebody downstairs.
I, I can speak on this a little bit. I've built and sold two homes that were our primary residence, that after we left, they've both been turned into bed and breakfast. And both of the cases, the owners live in the basement and rent out the other rooms. Because the other rooms are more rentable as an actual room with a view and windows versus a basement. So there's not as much money to be made in renting out a basement room. So.
And so are we, are we considering that this is also covering Airbnbs?
I don't think it would actually.
This is owner occupied.
This is owner, this is an enterprise that, that's owner occupied, and they're, they're offering that service. Airbnbs are essentially short-term rentals.
Okay.
Right now, we do not have any.
We don't have anything.
Really govern those.
Yeah, well, we need to.
We, well, we, we may. I guess the question is, at what point do we, do we feel that we need to step in? To my knowledge, we don't have a problem in sweet home with Airbnbs. You, you have problems with them?
Well, we have some that temporarily pop up during festivals and whatnot. And got reported this year that there's quite a few people renting out places of Airbnbs that probably shouldn't be. So, but we have no regulation, so there's not much we can do about it.
And, you know, we, we've discussed this in the past, and I've always said, we need to be ahead of the curve. We need to not wait until it's a problem, but we need to have something ready for people so we can support them. But not let it all go willy-nilly every which way.
So with Airbnbs, the biggest concern, the, the problem is that the line between a short-term rental and a long-term rental can often become blurry.
Yeah.
But the, the, the impacts of Airbnbs usually is in the, is with a property where a lot more people are staying there than would otherwise be staying there if it was a. A longer term rental. Parking, you know, noise from partyers, kind of messing up the feeling of the neighborhood. And so that, that's, those are the main impact. In, in some areas, in some places where there's more, more tourism, it can lead to problems with the housing supply. That's what happened in Hood River, where it became so profitable to buy a place and turn it into an Airbnb that the cost of housing went through the roof. And most people who lived there weren't able to stay there anymore. The council there took some steps. So that hasn't happened here yet. I suppose it's, it's a possibility. So certainly, that, I guess the question mainly is whether that should be within the development code, or if that should be regulated through a city ordinance. Because it's not exactly a land use. Because, you know, short-term rental can be any residential property. It doesn't, people don't usually build things specifically to make them a short-term rental. Usually that's a conversion after the fact.
Yeah.
And it's already developed. So I'm, I'm not sure, I guess, the, the right location. It's something that we can, I can look into and see what best practices are, if you'd like me to.
So did.
Let's, that needs to be on a sidebar, and then if it, if it is something we recommend to the city council, then we should just do it that way.
Yeah, and does Hood River have any verbiage as far as number of calendar days? Owner occupied versus rental?
They went after, if I remember correctly, they didn't do it in their development code. It was a, it was a part of, they had a section in the city code where they specifically targeted short-term rentals. And they, I, I think they, by the time they acted on it, it had such a problem that they took some pretty stringent actions. And they, I believe they, they, they started a registration program, and they capped the number of, of, of short-term rentals in the city. And you couldn't get more. And then they, they, I think they had a target they were trying to get down to. And so, you know, people who already had one were able to continue for a while. But as they dropped out, nobody could get a new one until they got to a certain level. But they, they didn't handle it through the land use process, it was in the ordinance.
Do they also, does residents have to have a permit to, I know a lot of people, if they don't use their garage, they make that into a living space? Or, or rental for a person to rent their garage?
That would be more of an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. You can, you can convert your garage or an attic, or have a separate building for an accessory dwelling unit. So that would fall under the accessory dwelling unit. So I have one thing that I was going to bring up about signs, F. We do have a separate sign criteria, so do we want to reference that sign criteria, or just?
A separate sign code, you mean?
We, yeah, we have our own.
Is it smaller than eight square feet, or is it?
Um, I don't know it by heart, but.
Or is it like, I think it's like three by five.
There's residential criteria versus commercial criteria, based on that, so.
I think we should look into referencing that, because we don't want, it's in the same bill and code, we don't want to contradict ourselves.
Yeah. And go with whichever is smaller.
Any other thoughts on this one?
Just a little observation. It isn't something that affects us very much, but among us who have lived in a college town, is there anybody with a basement that hasn't rented out?
Yeah. It's not unusual. I had a basement room when I was a teenager, it was great. I loved my basement room. Except for my mom used to bang a chair on the floor of the kitchen to get me to come upstairs, because she'd just take the chair and just bang it on the floor.
And all the spiders fall.
Really loud.
Oh, one more really quick?
Sure. Okay. That's actually not different than what's in our current code, pretty much the same. Just in a different section, a different format.
Well, I think it's a good stopping point, the next chapter's got a few more pages to it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's.
And it's completed, yeah. We still need to think of a different, uh, abbreviation for that. I mean, sometimes it might make sense, but.
Oh, I just got, I just got it. I just got it, duh.
Yeah. All right, with that, I, uh, move to adjourn our planning commission meeting for October twenty-first at eight twenty-three.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Ava.
Next meeting is?
Everybody stay dry.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot. I think it's.
Next meeting will be Thursday, November fourth.
All right.
FYI. All righty.
Hey, on a complete sidebar note.
What is, what, I can't remember reading anywhere what the three stances on having a restroom in a shop. For a while, it was a no, and then it was a yes, and I don't know where it's at now. It just has to be hooked up to sanitary sewer, city standards. You can't do a seventy, but, yeah, yeah, okay.
You just have to, it just requires mechanical plumbing, it requires more plumbing.